I'm going to call the city council work session to order.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councilors Weber.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Bradley.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Commissionary.
Here, thank you.
We have one item tonight, which is the police update with Chief Shear. Turn it over to PD.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Andrew Shear, the chief of police at Springfield Police Department. And to thank you all, the mayor and council for the opportunity to speak with you this evening and provide an update on some of the items in relation to the Springfield Police Department.
Slide show.
We are going to.
Pause for a second.
Go to the second slide. Very nice. Before we begin, I want to take a moment to recognize the men and women of SPD. So from our patrol officers and our unarmed community service officers who directly respond 24/7 to the immediate needs of this community, to the record staff and the dispatchers, who are often the first contact people have with our department, our detention officers who ensure a safe and secure environment, for those in our care at the Springfield jail, and all the administrative staff that make the entire operation run behind the scenes. I could not be prouder of the work that they do and the commitment they have to the people of Springfield. I also want to recognize the people and the businesses of this community and thank them for their support. It's been consistently demonstrated through their words of gratitude, and it was very clear in this past November when the police bond levy passed. Its passing secured another five years of financial stability for the PD, the jail, and the local justice system here in the city of Springfield. My intent is to get through this in a timely fashion, and I want to make sure you all have ample time for follow-up questions and discussions. So slide three, please. During last update in the fall, we talked about our accountability processes, and I shared that we had identified three specific areas where we were going to make improvements. The first of those areas was to more effectively communicate with community members who filed complaints. We've since created and implemented a way to do exactly that. The second thing we identified was that we needed to find a better way to document, track, and analyze complaint data to identify trends. That would help inform us about areas where we can do better. We also completed that, and we're going to be sharing that with you a little later tonight. The third area that we identified was to commit to reporting out on complaint information to city officials and to the public, which is what we're going to be doing here this evening. We're going to continue to do that by posting it on our website. So the topics I'm going to cover tonight are as follows. We're going to share our first yearly report related to complaints and commendations. We're going to talk about the changes we've implemented to provide an improved feedback loop to community regarding complaints. We're going to talk about the results of the most recent CIS assessment of SPD, a really brief measure 114 update, and I'm also going to provide you with a staffing update. So in order to achieve public trust and legitimacy, law enforcement agencies have to establish a culture of transparency and accountability. Our members consistently deliver high-quality professional public safety service to the people of Springfield during the over 50,000 calls a year that we take. Now that said, we all bear significant responsibility, and the expectations we're held to as an agency are rightfully very high. And sometimes we don't get it right. When SPD members accuse them of misconduct, we can conduct a fair fact-finding investigation to uncover the truth, and we then render a finding. The IA Pro software we've discussed here at council in the past and that we implemented in late 2021 to document and analyze uses of force also allows us to track complaints and commendations more comprehensively. 2022 is the first year we've been able to create a detailed report utilizing this new software. It provides us with a more comprehensive picture, which like the 2021 use of force report is going to help us identify trends and in turn develop policy and training to address areas that need improvement. So when there's a complaint that's investigated, there's four finding options. Those are defined here on the screen. But we're going to discuss the complaints in more detail shortly when we go over the yearly complaint report. So sustained means there was sufficient evidence to indicate the misconduct did in fact occur. Not sustained means there was insufficient evidence to prove or disprove the allegation. Unfounded means the investigation revealed the allegation was false and not based in fact, and that no misconduct occurred. And a finding of exonerated means the investigation revealed that the incident did actually occur, but the named member acted off lawfully and properly within policy. So in 2022, SPD members took 49,921 calls for service. That includes the call that officers or community service officers respond to, calls that were taken by record staff over the phone, contacts at the front desk, self-initiated activity by officers, instances of members conducting additional follow-up in previous cases. Basically, every contact we had that was generated by a call from community or initiated by an officer. And so of those almost 50,000 calls, we received 39 community-generated complaints, which represents 0.08% of all of our calls for service. And we take every single call as an opportunity to learn and improve, regardless if somebody complains about our service level. And when people make a complaint, that's an opportunity for us to look into what happened. Sometimes people may not be pleased with their service, and some probably choose to not file a complaint or a commendation. They might be busy. They may not think anything is going to come of it. They might not trust that we're going to take it seriously. We very much understand that. We're going to continually work to improve that trust. So the numbers that I share with you tonight simply represent those who took the step of formally contacting us about their police service. So this graphic shows that 18 employees received one complaint, and we had 11 employees that received more than one complaint. And how we can benefit from this trend analysis is that we can identify areas for improvement. So one example is now that we know that a relatively small number of employees account for a disproportionate number of complaints. So when we look further into the categories and the frequency of those complaints, it helps us identify if individual members need some kind of remedial or additional training in areas like communication, de-escalation, control tactics. So this report and the data contained in it is going to serve as a baseline for us moving forward to compare against in the years ahead. However, rather than waiting to address issues just simply on a yearly basis, we plan to continually monitor this data to identify those who receive higher numbers of complaints. That's going to help us address the root causes more effectively. It's also going to allow us to identify officers who receive a significant number of commendations so we can learn from them, hopefully to model some of their communication techniques on a broader level across the agency. When people we serve are not pleased with their interactions and file complaints. But we also receive commendations throughout the year that are submitted when the people are pleased with service they receive. So like with the complaints, the commendations can be submitted via email, regular mail, our website, or in person. And when we receive those commendations, we also enter them into the IA Pro database and put copies in the members' personnel file. So just like taking complaints and investigating them are a critically important part of our ongoing improvement efforts to our consistent documentation of the commendations. Officers who do good work and go above and beyond what is expected should be recognized for their efforts, both to reinforce the positive engagements but also to show their peers that all the members are appreciated by our community and the effort that they put forth is highly valued. At the last update, I shared that we've received feedback from community members that they wanted improvements in how we share information specifically with complainants. The information flow and a way to close the loop on the final resolution of the case is an area we identified where we needed to do better, and we've since implemented a process to do just that. Now, when a complaint is received, we notify the complainant via a letter that's sent by our professional standard sergeant that acknowledges receipt of the complaint, that states we take the complaints very seriously and that we intend to investigate them. We thank them for bringing it to our attention and explain that we intend to respond to them with an update within 30 days. If we're unable to complete the investigation with 30 days, then they're notified via another letter stating that the investigation is being continued, and in that letter will include a projected completion date. Upon completion of the investigation, we deliver a final findings letter that outlines the specific allegations and finding for each allegations, like I described earlier, sustained, not sustained, exonerated, or unfounded. We also include contact information so they can reach out to us if they have any further questions. So with this process, hopefully it more clearly states to the complainants than we have in the past that we heard them, we acted, we identified areas where we can do better. And if we did not get things right, we're going to take action to ensure accountability that leads to even more professional service delivery in this community. Ballot measure 114. So that requires permits for firearms purchases and restricts the sale or transfer of magazines of over 10 rounds ammunition, and that was approved by Oregon voters and scheduled to go into effect December 8th of 2022. So due to some legal challenges and other delays, implementation of the measure statewide is paused until those are all resolved. So we've been monitoring very closely and working with the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police and other agencies to better understand the requirements and challenges to implementation. The process changes that SPD and other agencies must make if it's implemented as it was originally written are going to require personnel resources and equipment. And if we were to realign existing personnel and resources to meet these requirements, it will impact our current level of service in other areas. I got information from the Oregon State Police that in 2022, there were over 38,000 firearms sold in Lane County. They couldn't drill down to how many were sold within the city limits of Springfield. There were 38,000 sold in Lane County. And so with national and locally owned retail outlets right here in our city and a population of over 60,000 people, I anticipate the number of permit requests will be significant. Administering the new process requires additional staff members, equipment, and implementation of new processes at SPD, all of which would most definitely require additional investment by the city. So we're going to continue monitoring developments and keep the council apprised and wait and see how this all unfolds in the courts and at the legislative level. In June of 2022, the city's insurance carrier, which is City County Insurance Services, better known as CIS, conducted what they referred to as the best practices in risk assessment of the Springfield Police Department. They reviewed three categories that included patrol operations, jail operations, and they also conducted a human resources assessment. They examined functions of the department to include risk management, policies, training, OSHA compliance, hiring and promotional processes, the jail, and overall compliance with Oregon revised statutes and administrative rules. We received that report recently, and it was included with your packet of materials to review this evening. We continue to be transparent in our efforts to build trust, and so we've also posted that report on our website under the open data tab. The report summaries in all three categories were favorable and positive. CIS did make recommendations for us to consider. In the area of the human resources review, the recommendations included further developing our interview questions on hiring and promotional processes, as well as the success criterion for scoring candidates. They also recommend development of a more formalized recruitment strategy. The jail recommendations include putting the camera system for the jail on a capital replacement program, having Springfield Human Resources explore workers' comp coverage for adults in custody, and to consider installing a Plexiglas barrier on some of the upper levels of the jail to mitigate risk of injury based on jumping, falling, or being pushed off an elevated position. For the patrol operations, the recommendations included I'm exploring the option to randomly review body camera and dash camera video during the next bargaining unit negotiations. The rest of the recommendations were to continue forward with the work we're currently engaging in in terms of development of future leaders in the department, completion of our accreditation process, and preparation for the subsequent re-accreditation process, continuing the supervisory reviews of high-risk incidents, training of all staff, and our ongoing community engagement efforts. So I really appreciate that CIS acknowledged the work that the men and women of SPD have engaged in recently, and I have to echo their remarks about the team at SPD. So the pace of change, I feel like, has been very rapid, and I know the change breeds uncertainty about the future. I'm as committed to the safety and well-being of the members of this agency as I am to the people of Springfield. And we have to provide an environment where officers feel appreciated and valued because that translates into a desire to engage in and a commitment to community service. We have a lot more yet to do and more improvements to make, but I look forward to continuing down this path of organizational growth in ways that are going to benefit members of the department and in turn this community through increased trust, transparency, and a greater sense of public safety. That's a QR code. I think it works, actually. You can try it.
Are you trying to sign us all up?
Yeah, we're hiring. Our total authorized staffing levels at SPD currently are 124, and we're running at 101 agency-wide. That is all-inclusive of our sworn, our non-sworn professional staff and our Springfield Municipal Jail detention staff. Of our 55 sworn police officer positions, we currently have 43 filled. We worked very hard over the last year to try to close that gap in staffing. And like every police agency, government entity, and even the private sector, this is an area we expect is going to remain a challenge in the years ahead. Seven of our officers today are in a probationary status, and four of those, fortunately, are lateral officers who came here from other agencies. And five of the seven are currently still working with a field training officer before they go into a solo status. So two of our most recent lateral hires don't need to attend the 16-week Basic Police Academy, but two of our other new hires still need to do so. And my current understanding of the scheduling of the academy is that one of our folks is going to attend that academy that runs March through July, but the other one won't be able to get in until June, and that runs June through October. So that's less than ideal because the academy should be the foundation where officers begin their training. But we're in a situation here where we're forced to train our own officers, which takes away personnel resources away from their primary jobs, and then we have to have them work for a coach for several months before we can even send them to the academy, unfortunately. We continue to hold a high standard for the people that we hire, seeking only new members that are truly committed to protecting the people of Springfield in a manner that embraces dignity and respect. So we're currently unable to leverage the ability to use hiring bonuses for lateral officers to help recruit, and that ended statewide in September. Many other states offer hiring bonuses. So every agency in Oregon are at a disadvantage in this extremely difficult hiring market. And I believe there's efforts underway at the state level to advocate for the ability for us to offer bonuses again, and that's something that I very much support. But the bottom line with the hiring is that we're continuing to make it a priority, just like most other law enforcement agencies and government entities. While it continues to be a challenge, we're looking at new opportunities. Look back one second. There you go. No back. We're beginning to attend college fairs. We're exploring ways to connect with members of the military who are not going to be, or who do not plan to reenlist. We've developed a join SPD page on our website. It describes the city, the department, the community, the people who work here, and the benefits of what SPD has to offer prospective candidates. It also describes every step of our hiring process and has a link for people with questions to reach out directly. We're focusing on improving our responsiveness to candidates who contact us for information because we found quick responses to their questions, offers to give them tours and ride-alongs, connecting them with other officers who may have recently been hired, who can share with them their experiences, or always we're seeking to connect with the best candidates and recruit them to join SPD. So the final topic I'm going to touch on tonight is our community outreach for 2022. So positive, non-enforcement-related police interactions are one of the ways to improve perceptions of police by eroding distrust over time. And by engaging in relationship building, we increase in trust and legitimacy, which in turn benefits the community through greater partnership, the results of public safety. The new community outreach report is attached, and this is the first year we've ever tried to track our hours and events attended. We documented our attendance at 166 events totaling about 358 hours. We continue to seek out opportunities to engage throughout Springfield and welcome suggestions and invitations by everyone. One of the ongoing efforts we've enjoyed is our regular food delivery program. We've partnered with Catholic Community Services and have committed to making deliveries in support of their efforts to fight hunger right here in Springfield. So two days every month, we deliver food boxes to multiple homebound community members, including disabled seniors. And I know it's appreciated by the people that we're serving, but it's also a great opportunity for our members to help those in this community that are in need. It's been very well received, and it's something that we plan to continue indefinitely. So thank you for the opportunity to share this update with you tonight. I want to open it up to any of your questions or comments.
Steve?
I support you guys 100%. You made so many improvements in the past two years since the askings we've had in the past. And that hurt Springfield's reputation. Get us out of that. Going on to another thing. I had, we had talked about having Spanish-language instructions in the waiting area. And I've been, I haven't been down there. I have been told that they are not, or they're involved. Or they are not.
There, there. So when you walk in the front door, we have a stand just to the right where they're in there, and they're also at the front desk.
Okay, I'm glad you know that. And the other thing is, somebody makes a complaint, it's ignored with a letter. You said it's delivered by sergeant.
It's mailed to them, and we can also email.
You happen to say sergeant, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that, the sergeant that runs our professional standards division, that's his responsibility.
That thing be pretty intimidating.
No, no, I mean the sergeant.
Thank you for this. I appreciate it. And I really appreciate you sharing the CIS report summary because there were things in there that I didn't know that I really appreciated. And I think that one of the things that they called out in there was really around this intent, which we talked about a year and a half or so ago that you said, we're going to focus on training, we're going to focus on culture, we're going to focus on these things. And the way they listed out all of the different things that we've done was very helpful, I think, to see all of that. And I appreciate that. And I, and they also call out something that I want to call out is I also think that, you know, having the support of our city manager, who's been such a strong advocate for, not only for the work that you're doing, but for the changes that we need to make. So I feel like we're on this journey. And I've had a few folks reach out to me and say, well, things are not changed fast enough, or things are not magically changed, which I say, systems don't change with magic. And that this is going to take, I mean, this is decades in the making, and we are two years in, and we can see these tangible results. So I just deeply appreciate that, and I appreciate the focus on, I mean, little things which seem little but aren't little, like visible tattoos are okay, and these things that say to people that they can come to work, bring themselves to work, and be accepted in the workforce are great. So that was my very messy way of saying, I appreciate this. I know we've got a long way to go, and by collecting the data, it does give us that baseline so we can start, like, seeing how we're improving, and is this working or is this working? So thank you.
All right, other questions? Joe?
Great. Awesome. I'm trying to, I'm reading, read the report, and I'm still trying to cipher out. We, data is collected on the amount of complaints and commendations by work group, which is great. But I'm kind of curious, and I'm not saying you're going to hand out any homework or anything, but maybe you have a sense of those complaints by work group. Is there a common thread, what type of complaints by work group? Are they common to, you know, you have records work group complaints that say, okay, well, I didn't get answered. The phone didn't answer soon enough. And then you have patrol complaints that it's like, I got perp spray where I would, you know, you know, I'm saying there's different categories of complaints. And I'm just wondering, my work group, because I noticed that like they've been checking, it was 11% of commendations, but they had only 4% of the complaints. I'm just trying to look at, is there a common, can you read into the type of complaints by work group and see where there may be areas that the work group themselves may have? You can focus on training in that particular type of weak spot.
Yeah, I can speculate to some of this. Why does patrol get more complaints in some of the other work groups and all that? But, but by just putting together this report, I mean, we literally have had this data for a very short time. And so now that we've got it, we need to start diving into it, looking at that. Those are all very valid points. You know, the, the three records complaints, were they all in the same area? Was it courtesy? Was it delay, time delay? Like, what was it, and where can we identify areas for improvement? And that's exactly what we want to do with this data.
Yeah, that's, you guys did a great job. Your reports, awesome. I can totally see all this happening. I mean, that's, it's just good. You really, I had my doubts a couple of years ago as to, okay, what can we show civilians, citizens? What can we show them? And it's not easy in law enforcement. It's really difficult to share law enforcement with civilians or citizens when it's a murky world. And you guys have done a really good job and appreciate your work a lot.
So one of the things I would recommend if, for people who watch this later would be to download the actual report and actually read the report. It's got a lot of information. It gives you a lot more detail about what the complaints are, how many that they found that were sustained, and how many were exonerated. I thought the detail looked, you know, we've never seen that kind of detail about what we're, what we're seeing from, in the PD at all. And, you know, the amount of work that you guys are spending to sort of research and remediate, you know, sort of service issues, right? Like, it's just absolutely outstanding. The one thing I do, like, there was a graph that was at the very start, the setup, you know, we're getting complaints on like 0.08% of, you know, and I think, and I think you made a very interesting comment, which was just an acknowledgement that that is what gets reported. That doesn't mean you don't have, you know, you don't have sergeants and lieutenants that are following up and providing coaching on, you know, some, you know, the rest of the pie, right? We're not, we know that we're not perfect, you know, every, you know, every single time. The 0.8% is just the, the amount that people sort of raise their hand for. So I was glad to see that. The other, the other couple of things that really, really jumped out to me, I think that the staffing thing, right, like, it is, you know, anything that we can do as a council to continue to support that through the state law enforcement organizations with the legislature, that is going to be an ongoing challenge for us. You know, I wish you had 10 more people, like, that you can get into tomorrow. But about the academy, is that going to get, is that left over from the pandemic? Or is that like a long-term challenge that we're, that you, you see sort of staying out here three to five years down the road?
I think it's going to be long-term. And it is a direct result of the pandemic and how long they were closed down. Everybody's trying to get caught up. Everybody's trying to hire. They can only put on so many academies a year. They don't have so big of a staff. And they really are trying to improve the pace and move things along. I can't tell you how long it's going to take before they get caught up. I mean, it could be years and years, but they're, they're trying, and they're getting better. I don't want to paint the picture that they're not being helpful to us, but they're just in a bind because everybody's trying to get cops into the academy. There's only so many spots.
Okay. I had, I did have one question about the letter that comes out and says, you know, and I think this was a goal we all talked about early on, which was tell people what happened with their complaint, right? And I'm glad that that's coming out. Is it just coming out with the result? Are we sending out sort of some explanation? Or so is it more like, hey, we're just saying it was sustained? Or are we saying, hey, here's some of the reasoning why?
There, there will be a brief, very brief explanation in that letter, but we're very deliberate about putting contact information in there about professional standards. So if somebody has further questions that are not answered by the letter, they can reach out to professional standards. Get them.
And that one might be something that's really interesting to, you know, just, you know, talk about next year is like, well, how many additional calls are we getting back from people saying, hey, I had more information, or I've got sort of, you know, other, other questions about what, about what's happening? So the, and then the CIS report, like, it looked like it had some good recommendations. Are we still going through that? Or are we sort of at the point where we're, we're saying we're doing all of it?
The recommend, the recommendations in this report?
For, for the CIS portion of the report. So when. Yep. They, they sent their, they sent their, they sent some opinions and the CIS report takeaways. So are we done with all of that? Are we doing it?
No, we just got the report here that was ago, and I think most of them are, I mean, we are developing a recruitment strategy. We've already reached out to HR, got examples from CIS about an improved scoring criteria on our hiring. We've got the jail staff and our budget people looking at the capital replacement for the, for the camera system and the workers' comp thing for adults in custody. I mean, that's very interesting, and I think that's something they're seeing at facilities and other parts of the state, so I think we kind of need to look into that as well. So yeah, we're, we're looking into it.
And maybe focus down on page eight of 21 detachment four, which shows, and I think it's specifically calling out the patrol operations recommendation.
Page eight, you said?
Correct. Eight or 21.
And which one, which one are you referring to?
Patrol operations recommendations, one through eight.
Yes, that, that was. Well, I mean, the, the, like, just for example, continue the community engagement. I mean, that's a recommendation they make. Well, we're doing that.
Yeah.
Continue the training of all staff. And we've pretty much doubled our training budget, even though we don't have a double training budget this year because we're trying to get caught up on a lot of things. Continue supervisory reviews of high-risk events. We're doing that. We have detailed after-action on all high-risk events, vehicle pursuits, all those kind of things. So a lot of their recommendations are things you're already doing, and they're just saying, just keep doing what you're.
Last thing, like, thank you, right? Like, this is, you know, each, each year, we're sort of building, you know, I've seen the PD sort of take it, you guys have been constructively dissatisfied, right? Like, look at everything we've done and tried to put different places, different things in place to make this, make this better. And this level of information about what's actually happening, like I said, we've never seen it. I want to end by reading one of these because you went really fast through those quotes, right? So over the last two years, the Springfield Police Department has made remarkable improvements in all aspects of their department. There is a clear and obvious change. There is a clear and obvious change in the culture of the department. There's like four other quotes that say essentially that same thing. So please pass on our thanks and keep, keep up the good work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
The last, was the last one done in twenty twenty?
Maybe M B, you're one.
I don't want to steal thunder from the council, but I am so grateful to you here and. Uh, to all the, that we teach and Zach here and. I'm also grateful to see other members of our executive team up here and listening to this report. It's, it's important that we. Learn from each other and always strive for continuous improvement. And I think that. This is an example of a department that had really good people that were really yearning for leadership. And once that, uh, the caliber of T shirt, we, you know, I don't know, best karma in the world, I don't know. Um, they, I think, I've seen this entire department really respond and blossom. Just so proud of them. I always knew that, that that was present in the majority of the people that I ever talked to. In the department, they just had to have the right conditions to flourish. And that's what. The chief and the chief and really every member of the department provides. So I'm very proud of this department. So if I do nothing else for the city, this is the one thing I'm. The most proud of.
All right. We even got this done fifteen minutes early. Um, any other questions before we let, let the police wrap this thing up? Um, they will, I think we've got S pack coming back as far as, um, please hear it. Uh, as far as, you know, sort of a police work session topic here in the next couple of months. So we will see, we will, we will see the P D back shortly.
So I believe our use of force report is in April, I think, so we'll back that up, sure.
Great, great. Thank you so much. We are here.
I'm going to call the regular session of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pleasure. United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Neil, how many people do we have joining us this evening?
Mayor, appears we have twenty one folks here in the council chambers and eight attendees online.
All right, so, um. Apparently I did not pack my script this evening. So if you are interested in giving public testimony, there is going to be multiple times to do that. Uh, if you're in the room, you need to give a, a card to A J. If you're online, we will take your testimony. Um, you just have to raise your hand at those, at those time periods. First item, please.
First item is the consent calendar.
I can make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Uh, Neil, could you call a vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
I.
And Counselor Pictionary.
I.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Next item is, uh, public hearings. Public hearing number one is a fiscal year twenty three supplemental budget to an appropriations transfer. This is resolution number one, a resolution adjusting resources and requirements in the following funds. General, special revenue, community development, fire, local option levy, regional wastewater capital, street capital, regional wastewater. Ambulance, storm drainage operations, vehicle and equipment, and authorizing the transfer of appropriations with, within the regional wastewater capital projects fund. From operating expense to capital expense and from general fund contingency expense to fire and life safety operating expense. And from fire, local option levy fund contingency expense to fire and life safety operating expense. And from ambulance fund contingency expense to fire and life safety operating expense. And Neil Obringer is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Neil Obringer, Budget and Procurement Manager in the Finance Department. Um, uh, as Neil said, this is the second supplemental budget of F Y twenty three. Uh, with three planned total this year. Um, as with all supplemental budget requests, these items reflect items that were not identified. Um, in the adopted budget or in, uh, prior supplemental budgets that were, uh, processed. Um, in the C B M tonight, you'll see items that were summarized by staff. Um, that were, were, um, were included because staff thought they may be of interest to the council. Um, you'll also see additional items. All items, um, really were summarized in exhibit A of the resolution as well. Um, so on any of those items, I'm happy to try and take any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Okay. Then I'm going to open the public hearing. I do not have any cards for this item. Neil, do we have any hands online?
It does not appear we have any hands for this item.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number one.
Second.
Neil, could you call a vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
I.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, motion passes, five yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Next item is the interim ward for council appointment process and Mary Bridget Smith is here for the staff report.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to continue, uh, the discussion about the process for appointing the. Ward for interim counselor. Um, this evening, uh, I'm asking the council to conduct a public hearing to have an opportunity for public input. On the process for appointing the interim counselor and then also, um, approve the process with a motion and a vote. I'd like to talk a little bit about, um, the reason behind the public hearing and the actual process before we jump into the hearing, if that's all right. So this is a new, uh, having the public hearing is a new part of the process. That's because last year. A council changed its operating policies and procedures to provide for a public hearing. For an interim counselor appointment or a mayor appointment for a vacancy. With the idea being that, that give the public an, uh, opportunity to weigh in on the type of process that the council will use. Um, so that's why we're having a public hearing tonight. Having the council formally approve the appointment process is not new. You did that last time with the ward one vacancy where Counselor Pitts was selected. Um, I did want to talk a little bit about the components of the process and the schedule. And then depending on if anyone testifies at the public hearing, they may answer their questions. So this, uh, process has, uh, four components. Advertising and recruitment, candidate evaluation, deliberations and appointment. The advertising in recruitment, um. Is, uh, the part where I am looking for some feedback from the council about some of the tactics that we plan on using. That's the idea that you're trying to inform the public about what the opening is, what all it entails in terms of a time commitment and role. And then making sure that the, um, advertising gets out to the community as a whole. So we have, um, a wider. Um, view of potential candidates in ward four. Some of the, um, tactics that are, um, yeah, I O. Who's sick today? So otherwise I think she would have been here to talk about this, but has, um, in mind are. You know, making sure on the webpage and on the front of the webpage, there's information that people can get to about the vacancy. So that would be one issue. Or one tactic, I should say, um, leveraging partnerships with Team Springfield in the chamber to get the word out. Leveraging, uh, pushing out through social media channels back to the website so they can get the application and know the schedule and that. Um, and then, you know, perhaps other. Um, affinity groups like Springfield Realtors Association, Rotary, those kinds of things. Advertising on the calc community calendar, um, which is a calendar that comes out periodically. And we've advertised, had advertisements on there before. Potentially paying for maybe some social media advertisements or an ad in the Chronicle, depending on cost. Might be another way. And then getting out to, um. You know, the Molina Leadership Solutions Podcast, potentially Spent the Rent Podcast, K P N W and other local news. You know, through ears or those kinds of things. So I think, trying to think about ways to kind of get the word out. Um, and then the next part of the process is the candidate evaluation. This is the, where the written application comes into play and then evaluating, um, also with an interview, an in-person interview. The application, I just wanted to confirm, last time we talked, the council was interested in, um, asking candidates to include a cover letter. So we'll be sure to put that on the application, you know, please insert, uh, you know, feel free to submit a cover letter and sort of. You know, put all your creative energies in the cover letter and not in other areas of the application and just answer those questions. So. Well, you don't see that in your packet tonight, but if that works for everybody, we'll make sure that that's in there. So you can see those. And then, um, for the interviews, uh, on April third, uh, the council comes back in a work session to evaluate the candidates. We have a list of like ten or eleven interview questions. I thought I would bring those to that work session. Cause that may depend on how many candidates you have, who you want to interview, how you want to work that. And certainly you could change that, but I thought maybe it was just a little too much detail for this level of the process. And then, um, deliberations are by a vote, some majority vote. And, um, and then the person is appointed and then officially sworn in. So those are the components of the process. There's a schedule included in your packet. It has about a thirty day application period. I think it goes till March twenty third. Work session on April third, that's sort of a regroup, like, how many applicants do we have? You know, who do you want to interview? How do you want to work these? And then some time on the schedule for April seventeenth for interviews and deliberations. You would make the vote at that time, um, according to the schedule. And then the person actually is sworn in. Most likely at a subsequent council meeting that kind of works for their schedule. May first, I think, is your next scheduled regular meeting, but. You know, it could depend on schedules or you could always ask to have a special meeting just to swear the person in. If we get into the schedule. Let's say it's April third or it's April seventeenth, there's still more deliberations to do. We certainly can add more time in. It's just a schedule to kind of give the public and you an idea of sort of where we're going. So those are the components in the schedule. Um, unless you have any questions or want to wait after the public hearing, but I'm ready for you.
Corey.
I have, it's kind of a suggestion really, because a couple of folks have asked me. Okay. So when we do the, um, advertising and recruitment. Um, could we put some information in there that says when, that it's a, you know, when the term would be up and. Oh, yes. Person would have to run. Yes. Um, so that people could be really clear that it's an interim for these months and then you would be running in twenty twenty. Four. So when they would have to run again, when their next term would start, all that stuff. Yeah, making sure that's. To share that, because that might influence whether people do or don't. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's good feedback.
Anybody else?
So this is just saying, okay, we're moving forward, but it's not making a decision as to what level of advertising you're proposing.
I'm looking for your feedback on the level of advertising.
I, I personally am not interested in putting a lot of energy or money into advertising.
Okay.
Because I think that people that have an interest in the city are going to be. Well aware of that the position's being open and plus I think it's incumbent upon counselors too to seek people. That, that may be interested in the post. Eric, you know, nominal advertising is okay. But, but I don't, I don't want to, uh, put a lot of resources and money into that advertising and. Frankly, I, I really wouldn't be too excited if we have four hundred applicants.
Okay, understood. Yeah, understood.
All right, any other questions? All right.
All right, I'll step aside in case.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Um, I do not have any cards for this item.
We have no hands for this item.
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Um, the one last question before I take a message that, how are we publishing the hours commitment?
We, um, talked about that, trying to make clear that it's, um, and then one of the first drafts we had talked about was just, you know. In addition to the council meetings, there are also other committee, um, requirements. And then, um, trying to acknowledge that the counselors are on multiple committees. I'm happy for feedback about like. You know, should we have sort of a estimate of monthly, every hours a month? Or a number of committees, like whatever, you don't know if you want to scare people away or like.
Just tell them ten, ten hours a month and it'll be fine.
Okay.
You don't want to scare.
And you might, don't, don't hype up the eighty-five dollar stipend, because that's really draw all in. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it's big money.
Yeah, but that is something we have talked about, because it is, um, it's a significant commitment and you, you want somebody who has to.
Yeah, if, if we put time, if we put time on there, like, let's, I don't know if it's an asterisk or like, let's. We, we should put, we should put a co, we should put a comment about there that like, we can size and scale and, you know, it's flexible. We can work. Like, we can work with people to figure, figure that, figure that piece out, right? Because this thing could be eighty hours a week if you wanted to.
Yes.
If people weren't, you know, work and what their commitments are, like, we can, we can shrink and size that accordingly. Victoria.
Could we also, I mean, we might mention that if they are interested to feel free to reach out to other counselors, because then they could talk to us individually. And ask different, each one of us what our commitment is and, and our experience. We'll try not to scare them off.
Okay.
Yeah, our comedy chops aren't going to cut it. Um, and then, yeah, and I, and I'm good with, I'm good with nominal advertising. Social media posts makes sense. Pushing it out like the usual things sort of makes sense. I don't know that we need to hit every, every airwave possible.
Okay, that sounds good. Then would it, I think then we can leverage social media, maybe look into the cost of a nominal ad with, um, Facebook or Instagram and then call it good.
Yeah.
All right, we could do that.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt. Across the process discussed in this public hearing for appointing an interim ward for city council.
Second.
Can you call a vote, Neil?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
I.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Mayor, next item is business from the audience.
I have no cards. Do we have anybody online?
We have one, uh, speaker so far online, no one on deck. The first speaker is Holly Shaper. Holly, just a moment, we'll unmute your microphone.
Good evening, can you hear me? Yes. Good evening, my name is Holly Shaper. I live in Ward Two. Um, I wanted to ask a couple of questions tonight about the police update that was provided during the work session. First, uh, there have been two biannual reviews of S P D by their insurance company, C I S. As mandated by the Kenny settlement. They occurred in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two respectively, and both reviews recommended that random review of body cam footage. Be conducted in order to observe officers in day-to-day interactions to confirm that policies are being followed. And to recognize and reinforce positive behavior of officers or to counsel officers if needed. Unfortunately, the current contract with the Springfield Police Association does not allow this, as you all learned in work session. However, the current contract expires at the end of June this year, which means the city and the Springfield. Um, Police Association will be negotiating a new contract or are currently negotiating. Is this twice recommended random review of body camera footage? Part of the terms of negotiation between the city and the Springfield Police Association? It seems noteworthy that the city's liability insurance provider, C I S, is recommending this. Especially given the fact that they have nearly dropped Springfield from coverage multiple times over recent years. And that there is a current five hundred thousand dollar per claim deductible on police and jail claims. Meaning the city is liable for the first five hundred thousand dollars of every settlement. That is a result of lawsuits stemming from the police in jail. Hopefully this recommendation is being taken very seriously, especially given it has been a repeat recommendation by the insurance company itself. And the next opportunity for negotiating it into the contract is right now. Second, I have a question about complaints that are internally generated, meaning not generated by the public at large. For example, if the same officer or officers have repeat instances of unlawful searches or seizures. As determined by the district attorney, when they send back a case with a finding of no file, sorry, no file. Meaning they are unable to proceed with charges. Does that pattern of unlawful searches automatically generate an open investigation into the officer's conduct? How is that recorded or documented? And then one final comment I wanted to make is that we are again expecting snow on the valley floor tonight. And with a low expected temperature of thirty-three degrees, the Eagan warming centers will not activate. Please consider this fact when working to ban all warming fires. People don't have places to go to keep warm. Thank you.
Here's, we have no other hands for business from the audience.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Is there anybody that wants to have counsel response? Your, your timer was close to mine. All right, next item, please.
Mayor, the next item, you have three resolutions. Resolution number one is a resolution of necessity for Mill Street Project P two one one five six reconstruction. This is a resolution number two, uh resolution exercising the power of eminent domain and authorizing a resolution pursuant to O R S two two three point zero zero five, O R S two two three point one zero five. And O R S three five point six zero zero dash six two five concerning acquisition right of way necessary for Mill Street redevelopment project. This is project number P two one one five six and Jeff Pascal is here for the staff.
Good evening. Uh thank you, Mayor and Council. Um this is very similar to a resolution you saw a couple of weeks ago. So when you see these capital projects like this, especially road projects, you're going to see us coming to you with these resolutions of necessity. Um what we're doing with these Mill Street in particular and the next two is Mill Street. Um we're not growing the right of way a great deal. What we need is temporary construction easements and typically clips on the corners for ADA to accommodate current ADA accommodations. So to get the ramps put in there and so um when you look at the map that was in there, that it's demonstrating which tax lots we're negotiating with, not the green box does not represent the area that we are looking to acquire. So and most of the folks out here, we've already been in communication with through the design process. We're just to that next step where we have to start identifying the specific areas that we need access to their property.
Joe.
The, the biggest question I have is of those properties that you've been identified in regards to negotiating what are, well, we have existing right of ways, so there's nothing really to negotiate except for you said, just a little bit. And that kind of is a little bit spooky. In my mind, what just a little bit is because.
In some cases, it's one foot for a temporary construction easement just to give the contractor room to put a form board for the concrete sidewalk.
And that's, that's temporary to give that back, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then in some cases, it's actually getting a clip at the corner because these older neighborhoods, the property lines
Right to the.
To a ninety.
Yeah.
But we need space to get an appropriate ADA ramp in there and where we weren't able to design around those, we have to get clipped that corner. And so in some cases, I mean, looking at examples like on Mohawk Boulevard and things like that, it could be anywhere from a hundred square feet to just ten square feet is what we need when we design that.
An area as big as ten foot by ten foot.
Potentially. I don't think we have any of those on Mill Street. Mohawk was a probably not a great example for that because of the, just the sheer space and the size of the roadway and the size of those ramps and just we had some funny angles where the roads didn't come in at nineties, but yeah, sometimes they're here. Most of these, we were working to design these to be bulb outs. So we're trying to minimize by pushing out into the roadway and use the right of way that we have and minimize that take on those roadway, on those properties.
So of those properties, do we have, I guess we wouldn't be going to or exercising. Well, I think in the next one is eminent domain.
Our goal is not to have to exercise that eminent domain. This just puts us that the, um and I think Mary Bridget can speak to this, the the relocation act requires us to go through certain steps and notify and it's protections for the property owner and protections for the city. So by declaring this a public necessity, if we have to get to that point where we need to declare eminent domain, we probably most likely be back here with to counsel with where we're at in the negotiation process and what that next step is. But our goal is to successfully negotiate these and I, like, I think of all the ones we did on Mohawk Boulevard, Olympic and all of the overlays on all of those. We didn't go to eminent domain once on any of those corner clips.
So, so what stands out for me then is, is there any property owner at this point not wanting to be part of this, I mean, or, or fighting it, or I guess whatever term you want to use.
To speak for Christie because it's her project and she's managing that and she's managing that, but I have not heard from her that she has any buddy on the pro- that we know of at this stage of the project that is in essence protesting or not wanting to participate in negotiations.
So I would personally love to have assurance that, that every single affected property owner hasn't, has indeed been contacted and that their responses are documented. So we have some documentation from those property owners should six months down the road or three months down the road, we start moving forward and they jump up and say, I never knew. But I want to be able to see some documentation says, well, yeah, you did.
I think that's one piece through the relocation process. It's very specific on if we need to take property or we need to negotiate property for the project, even a temporary construction easement. It has, is very specific on what the notification has to be, what they receive in feedback. And then how many days they have to consider that before we can even go back and entertain a quick claim.
I mean, just, just something so we can refer back.
And that's.
Down the road.
And that's all documented. I mean, from my, when I was doing projects like that, you document all of those because of all of those negotiations. Some of it is if you're negotiating things that get done during construction to make sure that those things get done. So we have a file, the um they keep a file for each one of those properties with those conversations and those did not negotiations. Um we're not using, I don't think we're using the county for Mill Street, but typically they have a diary when they meet with those folks. The, the appraisers and the those folks, they keep a diary of what that conversation and when those notifications.
All right, well, so if it's not documented, it didn't happen. Just.
I understood, but that's, and this is a federal aid project, so that puts us even under more scrutiny because if something goes sideways and the feds found out that we didn't follow the, the law.
Right.
We might have to give them the money back that we built the project with.
That we don't have.
That we wouldn't have.
Victoria.
This is always a subject that, a- as I mentioned, the last time we talked about this, that makes my hair on the back of my neck stand up and that part of this says, it says temporary construction easement, but prior to that, it says acquire permanent roadway right of way. And so what I'm understanding is if we vote on this, even though you're in negotiations, the reality is, is that once we vote on this and it goes through as yes, that if you get into those negotiations and they don't work out, you're gonna, you can take it. Am I, I mean, just to simplify it down to that, is that not the case? Regardless of the process and how long it takes, reality is, is we vote on this and you can take their property.
Jeff, I can put that. This is the first step. It's true. This is the first step in a condemnation matter, but recall that um for condemnation and eminent domain, property can only be acquired by the government for just compensation. So what we do tonight is to um, you know, acknowledge that there's a public use for this property. Um that it's part of our capital improvement program and then this is the first step in potentially um ac- acquiring property via eminent domain. But if, when we have done these projects before, when they come back, um we've done larger eminent domain projects in other areas like Franklin and Gateway. There is more process to come back to the council, um but you're correct, this is the first step.
Yeah, and just compensation is in the eye of the beholder.
Good point.
So maybe that could be something that would help us, right? Because this is, this, what we're doing tonight is a first step and we're kind of treating it like a new process, right? And maybe what would help us as we see more of these is this, is there sort of remind us that we are here.
Yeah, okay.
Right, and we have plenty of counsel, either feedback, openings, um a chance to what, chance to weigh in. This isn't the last time we would be see it.
Sure.
I think the one thing too I talked, so we have a new city survey. That city surveyor was the person at Lane County who managed all of their right of way acquisition and is an expert in this process. And so I think working with him, I, I'm, if the council would like, he is very interested in sharing that knowledge and he can give you kind of what the steps are because in his view is this is protection for the property owner and protection for the city by initiating this. In the past, whenever we've gotten to a sticking point where we couldn't successfully negotiate, we would come and ask for this resolution on those specific properties that we needed to initiate condemnation. The one issue with that is it sets us back. And so it can be, it can really hold the project up if we don't do this in the beginning.
And um, okay.
Because you have to, sometimes you have to start the process over from the night that you, we got that resolution from the council.
Are there any other questions? And I would imagine everybody on Mill Street's just so excited to, you know, get the road fixed more than anything.
I haven't heard anything that the folks on Mill Street are upset with the process.
Corey.
And just to, I know this is not related to this, but being able to add all of those ADA ramps along that in addition to developing it and having lived through what happened on Mohawk. Um it was rather quick and when we get closer, the folks who are most impacted, I found were pedestrians and bicyclists by those that work, but I am very excited to have all of that um ADA accessibility for folks in that area. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, Joe, you're up.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number two.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Ramon.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
No.
Counsel Pictionary.
Yes.
Motion passes, four yeses, one no. Next item, please.
The next item is a resolution of necessity for South Twenty Eighth Street paving project. That's P two one one by five. This is resolution number three. A resolution exercising the power of eminent domain and authorizing a resolution pursuant to O R S two two three point zero zero five. O R S two two three point one zero five and O R S three five point six zero zero dash six two five concerning acquisition right of way of this uh way necessary for the South Twenty Eighth Street paving project. Again, project number P two one one five five and Jeff Pascal is here for the staff report.
It's similar to the last one, this is, um but I'll get into this. I'll just go directly to the specifics with South Twenty Eighth Street. So to um some of Counselor Pictionary, so the map inside shows the area, the frontage. So this is an unimproved road. And so and if, for those of you who've been on South Twenty Eighth Street, it's kind of just one long driveway for some of those businesses. And so the um project manager and Lane County through the design process and where they've gone have actually been working closely with, I believe it's three property owners in there on how best to work on that frontage. And so they have been a part of the design process and working with the project team and know that this is coming. So this is now just that step of, we've defined the envelope. We know what we're going to construct and this is what we're going to need to acquire to make this project happen. And so um but those property owners are aware of it. This isn't the surprise to them in that process.
Are, are there any questions?
Just one.
Go ahead.
So if my memory serves me correctly, there's a um auto parts wrecking yard business there in the middle. And it seems like they're, they're building, I remember is kind of close up to twenty eighth. Not a whole lot of space there was, or was that?
I think that's actually a sub building. They have a, if I'm thinking of the one that's fenced off. When you look at the map, it looks, I believe that's actually sub water.
Oh, I'll take it. That's fine.
So we are actually having, that's one of the areas we have to design around because they put that, that building in there.
Okay, I knew there was something that was.
Yeah, the, the one that's really close to the roadway, I believe is sub waters. It's a pump.
We gotta work around it or we go right through it?
We're not going to take the building. At least I'm not aware that we're taking the building. That adds a lot of costs because then we have to relocate the building and there's a lot of pumps in there, I believe, so.
How about necessity? I'm sorry, I shouldn't mean.
Keep your day job. Comedy's not going to be your, uh, not your best suit. Any other questions? All right.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number three.
Okay.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Ramon.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
No.
And Counsel Pictionary.
Yes. Motion passes, four yeses, one no. Next item, please.
And the last resolution of necessity, um resolution of necessity Laura Street. This is P two one one eight eight. This is resolution number four, resolution exercising the power of eminent domain and authorizing a resolution pursuant to O R S two two three point zero zero five, O R S two two three point one zero five. And O R S three five point six zero zero dash six two five concerning acquiring right of way necessary for the Laura Street redevelopment project. Again, project number P two one one eight eight. Jeff Pascal's here for the staff report.
Um so with Laura Street, the particulars, for those of you who are very familiar, is a, a mismatch of improve or I should say urban standard and unimproved streets of Lane County. So the history of this project is Lane County has money to improve their portions of the roadway. Um there's a small section that the city has that's still unimproved. Um but we're also going to improve the ADA and some of the pavement in there on the improved sections of the roadway or the urban standard where we already have sidewalk, curb and gutter. However, when you look at the map again, you'll see areas where the um those unimproved sections where um the right of way hasn't been dedicated. Because the, those properties just haven't been annexed and developed yet at this point in time. So we'll be negotiating with those for those frontage improvements. And um those takings for the need for that right of way and also again, some corner clips and temporary construction easements on the already urban improved sections where we do have sidewalks.
Okay, so when I look at the map, there's two portions to this. There's a Lane County driven portion and a city driven portion, and this looks like just the Lane County driven portion in my, is that correct?
Shit, I don't think so. That, if that is the case, that's a mistake that I missed.
Because there's nothing south.
Probably. Yeah, I don't see, you're correct. We might have to, because I don't see the stuff that's south of there.
Yeah.
Because we shouldn't, the council shouldn't need to act on the um county's portions. It should just be on the city's portion, I would think, right, Mary Bridget?
That's right.
Okay, so, yeah, we may need to come back. That's a good point. I didn't, now that I look at the map, I'm noticing that I only see the, the north section.
All right.
See you later on this one, huh?
Yeah, well, also I have to confess, I'm not the project manager. I'm filling in and so I'm not as familiar with the project and what, you know, that the needs are.
As, as a person who drives Laura quite a bit, there are parts of it that are beginning to look like Mill Street. And so like this, from, from a, from a, when, when I talk to people that are in my neighborhood and the businesses out there, they're very much like this is a priority to get done.
Yeah, but and that's when we looked at the pavement, that's why we looked at our section too. And also when the county got the money to um improve their section, it was like, we need to find the money to improve ours and just may actually finally complete Laura Street. It's been, I think, it's been a, a topic in the C I P since I've been here for nineteen plus years. It's been one of those things back and forth with the county of who's going to get sidewalks and with the uh manufactured home park. And we get a lot of um people who use mobility devices and there's no sidewalks or walking, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, then we will reschedule this item.
Didn't that county money come through M P C?
Yes.
Okay. And I think they're going to give us the road. What's that, Victoria? Oh, all right, next item, please.
Any business from the city council?
Any business? All right. I actually had two, two quick pieces of business and um without Leonard here, we do need somebody that could temporarily step in for the arts commission. Um I did get an email asking, since they were so short, asking if, you know, they can just have somebody check in on them and that meeting is Thursday. Um between, I think, five thirty and seven before I volunteer somebody. Here is now your opportunity, Steve, to volunteer.
Okay. I think, I think my wife has applied for a position on that, so you'll be, you're bringing her for too long.
All right, then AJ, could you?
Family.
Could, could you let them know that, that Steve will join them at least temporarily until we get a ward for ward for commissioner or counselor? Now Nancy's got me doing it. Um second question, now I forgot the acronym, Corey. Mac.
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 Yeah.
So you want to ask the question or you want?
Well.
So. So um at, I, on the P H B, uh this came up when the county reported out about the governor's executive order on um on homelessness. And there's an interagency committee that's sitting that was called the MAC. That had other agencies on it, but they didn't, like, they didn't mention us and we hadn't, like, I had no idea what this, what this committee was. So I think there's two questions. One of them is on a staff level, are we participating in that committee? The second question is, what is it actually, what does that committee actually do? And.
Yep, my understanding is it's going to be the sort of executive committee guiding the process to prepare for the process. And I can look at the information that Kate sent out, but and I, I know that Mayor Vena said that Eugene had a seat on that. So I was like, does Springfield have a seat on the MAC? And I'm also meeting with Kate, but on Thursday, so I can also pester her when I'm wearing seventeen hats.
You are indeed. Um Mayor and Council, I, it's been a while since I've read the executive order on that. Um I know that it specifically referenced. You are indeed, um, Mayor and Council, I, it's been a while since I've read the executive order on that, um, I know that it specifically referenced. Uh, communities more northern to us, so I need to look at what our regional involvement is, but I can have. Our staff look at that and send you out an email.
That would be great.
Okay.
All right, next time.
Tag teaming it, we couldn't get it right, we're just like, we want to have a say.
That, that's how confusing the county, that, and not to blame the county, but that's how confusing the explanation, the lack of knowledge is right now, um, is.
Getting fast.
Yeah.
I would just say ordinarily, when you're looking at issues of housing, human services, those fall within county purview, so it wouldn't be. Odd if we weren't included as a city, um, my, I could only imagine if Eugene is involved, you know, the county seat is Eugene. They, they have a lot of, um, they chose to have a lot of service provisions there, so it would make sense on a Lane County side, so let me look into it a little bit more.
Yeah, and I am not necessarily vested in that we need to be involved, it's more that, more that we need to figure out, well, what's this thing? And how's it playing in the broader, broader picture? All right, next item, please.
Any business from the city manager?
No business, thank you.
Any business from the city attorney?
No business tonight, thank you.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.